Good evening, everybody. Let's call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with all devotion unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're beginning tonight with a public hearing, the Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposals. The Neighborhood Assistance Act provides a tax credit to tax-exempt organizations that make cash investments in qualifying community programs, things like energy conservation, job training, education, crime prevention, and things like that. The town manager's office has received two proposals, one from the Simsbury-Grange and the other from the Housing Authority, and I just wanted to see if anyone would like to speak on either of those proposals.
Scott Riley with the Simsbury-Grange.
Would you mind stepping up to the microphone over there?
Thanks, Scott.
TV cameras, can you grab you?
Hi, I'm Scott Riley with the Simsbury-Grange. I believe this is our third year in applying for the Neighborhood Assistance Act grant, and we've benefited from the first two years greatly. We're looking to do some energy improvements on the building in West Simsbury, the Grange, which is almost 100 years old. It kind of operates on a shoestring, and it's important to note that approval by the town does not cost the town any money. The state has set aside a block of money that goes to organizations that apply for the grant, and then businesses give us money and get 100% tax break on the money that they give. So the money is already set aside by the state, and approval of this does not cost the town anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed?
Good evening. Ed Lamontain, Executive Director of Simsbury Housing Authority. So as you know, the Housing Authority is located in the north end of town, comprised of two properties, Dr. O'Nell Murphy Apartments, with 70 units, Virginia Connolly Residence with 40 units. Now, back in 2013, CHFA, who, in consultation with the Department of Housing, commissioned a 20-year capital plan to evaluate the physical needs and financial operational needs of the Housing Authority. So back then, they looked at both properties and made a determination that over a 20-year period of time, it would cost X amount of dollars in order to bring those properties up to what is considered renovations that would meet the needs of the facilities. So at that time, they determined it would take approximately $2.2 million in order to do that. Even with a 3% annual provision, or indexed at 3%, that would only bring in about $800,000. So that would leave us about $2 million short in order to make the needed renovations. So that was 2013, so it was already six years ago. What we're looking at through this grant is to replace 35 apartments up at the exterior doors of 35 apartments up in the Dr. O'Nell Murphy Apartments. Currently, the useful life of those doors is 40 years. They are now beyond that by 20 years. So from an energy-efficient perspective, that's something that we'd like to do. Obviously, that covers 50% of what we need, and that's only one aspect of everything that we need. But in the past, we have done small cities grants. We look to do those in the future, that we can do some more work that is required. But at least for this particular grant, we think that by virtue of doing at least 50% of the exterior doors would be of benefit.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on either of these proposals? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move on to our regular public audience. Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Switcombe Drive. It was very disappointing to get the results of the budget referendum, that only 6% of the voting public participated. The Board of Selectment budget increased 14.03%, and the Board of Education budget increased 2.5%. According to the flyer sent to all homes, the five-year average of the Board of Selectment was 4.95%, and the Board of Education was 1.56%. The total town budget for 2019-2020 is $91,108,561, an increase of $3,558,363. The mill rate, including the fire district taxes, 38.52 mills, an increase from 37.58 mills. The budget was reduced to an increase of 4.06% through the use of one-time revenues that will not be sustained. The town has reduced town revenues by using the abatement policy to give tax abatements to private individuals for renovations to buildings and waivers for building permits. The town has given waivers and reduced police overtime payments to the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, a politically active private organization. Another application for tax abatement that came before the Board of Selectment is from Ensign Bickford. Ensign Bickford, called EBA and D, was given a tax abatement and waivers on construction, drastically reducing revenues to the town. According to testimony from Mr. Walsh, saying that this project is just one phase of a continued expansion, he said that EBA and D is trying to determine whether this is the best place for the company to grow. He said the company has options in Colorado and California, and that they will scale back on their investment if they do not see a future here. Mr. Walsh said that EBA and D's share of the property taxes with Dyno Nobel continues to increase. He said that this request is relevant to their ability to stay in Simsbury long-term. This proposal appears to enhance Dyno Nobel, a multi-international corporation that owns the property, while Ensign Bickford is leasing the property. Ensign Bickford has already moved their administrative staff to Colorado, a signal that this might be a short-term strategy while the taxpayers have diminished revenues on a failed project. We have no guarantees that Dyno Nobel or Ensign Bickford will remain in town with or without tax incentives. When I voted for town manager, I thought that the floodgates of political incentives would be diminished. Taxes have increased, and all the boards, commissions, and subcommittees of the Board of Selectmen have not proved that there are any accomplishments. In my opinion, it appears that all the boards, commissions, and committees are busy going nowhere. The Wagner property has been vacant for years. Andy's Plaza has been vacant for years. Big Y has a for-sale sign on their property with no office, with a barn also for sale. Tower Ridge Country Club on Nod Road is shuttered, with only a maintenance staff to cut the grass on a closed golf course. We have an oversupply of rental homes that will eventually lead to lower property values. The Board of Education has spent $200,000 on a school facilities management plan and reconfiguration study. With decreased enrollment in the schools, there will be a consolidation of students with the closing of schools. There should be a consolidation of schools, kindergarten to second grade, third to fifth, and grade six through eighth in the middle school, and nine through 12 in the high school. This would eliminate at least one school, and possibly two, over the years. According to the report, there are many deficiencies in the schools that are old and require substantial amount of capital expenditures over the years. The Board of Finance should have continued discussion of the challenges and the future expenditures needed by the Board of Education, as highlighted in the consulting report. Background information from this facilities report stated that Simsbury's population is aging. The median age increased from 41.7 years old to 44.7 years old. As Simsbury's population is aging, with an increase of assisted living developments in town, adding more senior citizens with medical needs. This increase in an aging population will place an extreme stress on the ambulance services. Both fire department and volunteer ambulance services are advertising for volunteers, as they have diminished volunteers. The Simsbury dispatch staff has continually been stressed trying to find volunteer ambulance services to supply staff with critical medical needs where time is in the essence. It is timed the Board of Selectmen invite AMR staff to come before the board to make a presentation on their performance and delivery of services with paid full-time staff. It is essential in the delivery of services to medical calls. As Simsbury ages and demands are increased for ambulance services, we can no longer count on volunteers for ambulance services. The Board of Selectmen should be proactive in providing critical needs of the Simsbury community and invite AMR to educate the board. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe News Feed, on Facebook, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Anybody else in the public audience?
I'm Joe Tracy, 40 Berkshire Way, and I just wanted to have a few brief comments about the topic of the evening of the solar farm. Appreciate that the board is going to have a presentation by Mike, so we all have the same facts, and we can understand what's going on with the project as it proceeds. The first and foremost issue for me, obviously, is the elimination of many acres of trees at the end of Berkshire Way. It's about 200 feet from the end of the road. If you had, if, over time, you looked at the simulations that Deepwater provided us at the time of their filing with the CSC, you would see that they had two renderings. One was a, this is the existing condition, and one was a simulation of what it would look like. The picture of what it looks like today is nothing like what it really is today. And I would invite you, as Eric has come and visited us last week, we appreciate him coming, and we'd appreciate all of you coming, to see what it actually looks like, and it clearly is a brown field right now, soon to be, I'm not sure how many tens of thousands of solar panels, which will be facing directly at Berkshire Way, because that's, we're south of the field. And so that's the number-one issue that I have with where it is. Hopefully, Mike will address that. Also, there is a town right away at the very end of Berkshire Way, was known for R40, that particular field. The town has a right-of-way so that they could put a road in there to the neighborhood that they were going to create. We would appreciate some kind of help working with, I guess it's TBS now, and not Deepwater, to put some kind of buffering at the very end of Berkshire Way, as well as on the property of Steve Sutton, who's on the right-hand side, as you're looking towards the field, or Liz Shalansky, who's on the left-hand side of Berkshire Way. We'd certainly appreciate your coming out, taking a look, and I agree, Eric mentioned to me in an email that we should wait and see what actually, what you can actually see when the panels were in place, and I understand that, and it's only a matter of months, anyway. So I think that's a great idea. The second issue that I have, and I just want a confirmation from Mike, is that the existing buffer on County Road from the first, from the second barn up to John Martel's property, that tree line is going to be maintained, and for right now, you really can't see it on the leaf-on condition. But what's it going to look like in the leaf-off condition? And is TBS willing to put a buffering on their side of the property so that people coming up County Road either way don't have to look at the solar farm as it is today, as it will be? Also, there was a couple of comments in the, in what Deepwater's comments were to the CSC, as well as CSC's comments back to Deepwater. I'm really not sure what they mean about, in their soil and materials management item, monitoring wells. There are a couple of wells, we know, that are out in those fields because of the contamination due to the pesticides and herbicides that the farm used for probably 50 or 60 years. The Deepwater mentioned that they were going to eliminate those wells. I guess what we would like is a clarification, is why don't we need those wells to monitor? Are there going to be any other wells, particularly near where Mr. Martel's property is, which is a well, and as well as the Howard and Knollwood neighborhood, which are all wells? And if they're going to be eliminated, who, if anyone, is going to monitor the water quality, not only for those wells, but also for the second-largest aquifier that we have in town, which is right at the crest of the hill of Hoskins County? It's something that I think somebody needs to specifically address, that they're going to monitor, they're not going to monitor. What we asked for, seems like just yesterday, but actually months or a year ago, was that there'd be monitoring, water quality monitoring, at the beginning of the project, which has already started, during the project, and on a regular basis after the project is completed, to make sure after they pound 30,000 to 40,000 pilings into those fields, that they don't disrupt the groundwater, which then flows into the aquifier, which is downhill from there. And the last item that I hope Mike comments on is the decommissioning plan. I'm really not understanding how they're going to use the scrap value of the solar farm, they estimated about $300,000, is going to cover the $1.9 million they say it's going to cost to remediate the whole solar field and return it to farmland. So I'm looking forward to Mike's presentation, and I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much, Joan. Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Okay, oh, yeah, sure.
Steven Sutton, 45 Berkshire Way. Actually, really concurring with what Joe Tracy has said, I just really wanted to make myself known and present to say that I do really appreciate that Eric coming out and checking out the property, and speaking with people, Aaron, forgive me, I don't know Aaron's last name of the project, about doing some buffering in that area, because our, not just my house and Liz Shalansky's house, but our whole neighborhood is severely affected, and the character has now changed drastically. That's essentially what I wanted to say.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, anybody else in the public audience? All right, thank you. So we have two presentations. The first is a proclamation in recognition of National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 7th this year, and this is sadly a day that towns and cities across the country have recognized since 2015. As part of the recognition for the week leading up to June 7th, iconic buildings, including the National Cathedral in Washington, are illuminated in orange. We see we have folks from Moms Demand Action who are sporting it. I forgot my orange tie today, shame on me.
You have your eyes.
Oh, I have my eye tie covered. Fantastic, excellent. But coinciding with this proclamation, we will be lighting our very own Eno Memorial Hall in orange the first week in June. And as I said, we have members from Moms Demand Action here tonight to accept the proclamation. So I will read it, and then Meredith will just say a few words. So whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Day is to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence, and whereas every day, more than 95 Americans are killed by gun violence, and protecting public safety is the highest responsibility of elected officials, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people, and whereas anyone can join this campaign by wearing orange on June 7th to help raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Eric Wellman, declare June 7th to be Gun Violence Awareness Day in Simsbury.
I will give this to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, yeah, absolutely. Just ask yourself and...
I'm Meredith Behrs. I live in Simsbury, and I have three kids, one husband, and I'm a physician in Avon. So maybe some people who might hear know me from that venue, but bear with me, I've never done anything like this before, even though I spend a lot of time talking to people I hardly know. This is just a different venue for me. So anyway, so thank you for proclaiming Gun Violence Awareness Week. I just want to give you a little background behind it. It was started by the friends of a girl named Padilla Pendleton. She had gone to Barack Obama's second inauguration to perform for the ceremony, and within two weeks of going home, she was shot in a park outside where she had just gone to shelter from some rain as a stray bullet accident, and her friends honoring her life wanted to do something about it, and so they decided to make the first week in June Wear Orange Week, or Gun Violence Awareness Week, and they chose June for her birthday and orange because of the color hunters wear, and we want, you know, hunters wear orange to say, notice me, notice this issue, and that's what the goal of, you know, the Wear Orange Week really is. So, and like Mr. Wellman said, this is supported by various, you know, communities, building groups across the nation, who are just looking for a way to positively grow, you know, grow our communities. So just some quick facts, about 100 people die every day from gunshot wound. That's just, I mean, it's pretty amazing, you know, doing my rotations as a side in St. Francis, it was always a reliable thing that you could have a gunshot wound come in, in ER at night, when you're on trauma surgery service. They're the second-leading cause of death in children in the United States. I mean, that really should give everybody pause, but as a pediatrician who spends my day, you know, looking for cancer, you know, how many conversations do I have about car seats? It's really amazing that, really, gunshots, and really, it's, you know, part of the reason why I think that it needs to be something that pediatricians talk about. You know, second-leading cause of death of children in the United States. 1,300 die annually from it. 5,790 are treated for gunshot wound annually. But here's something that really gets me, and I think this is kind of really an unknown fact about gun violence in the United States, that 2/3 of the deaths are actually suicide. I have an editorial coming out in the Valley Press either this week or the next, I'm not really sure which week it's coming out, on this untold aspect of gun violence in the United States, that there's a lot of suicide. So, and I also address some of the things that we can do about it. And the good news is that Connecticut has some great gun safety laws, and, you know, we, it's our second-leading cause of death in Connecticut by suicide because of our gun safety laws. A lot of the country, it's their first-leading cause of suicide death. You know, when I was going over a lot of this, I was having some really gruesome and horrible conversations with the epidemiologists about this. You just say, it's a very, you know, interesting thing to have to learn about. Anyway, so, for example, two of our good, you know, gun safety laws are the extremist protection order, also known as red flag law, where basically if you have a peer or a friend or a family member saying, you know, I'm really, you know, thinking about hurting myself, we can ask for help getting someone to hold on to their guns until they're getting help. Or, you know, rules to lock down and safely lock your guns are actually going to help, or safely store your guns are going to really help decrease, you know, people being able to access the gun if they know where they are in the house to hurt themselves. So, and then just that, the last thing I want to say is that I really got into this, fear and frustrations for school shootings for my own children really started my engagement. I feel frustrated and angry that gun violence is being normalized in our lives. My youngest child is now coming out of Latimer, has never known a year without a lockdown drill, and my oldest comes home, you know, to hold his Spanish test, I couldn't finish it, I had a lockdown drill, and, you know, that's like a big thing to her, she's a Simsbury scholar, which, you know, if you know, the moment of bragging, it's a really, she really works very hard on her academics. And, you know, my goal is just to interrupt, to reverse this normalization of gun violence in our lives, in our children's lives, so. But that said, you know, I'm working Moms Demand Action, and I feel, you know, most people feel this way, we really want to support our friends who are teaching their own kids to hunt. This is a good thing to me, that I think it's a very honorable way to, you know, obtain nutrition for your family, and it's something we should support and respect. And I also respect all my friends who choose to keep a gun safely locked in their house as a means to, you know, protect their house and their family. So, and personally, my goal is to find a way to do this, so that my child and their child do not have to hide behind a desk someday, because together, I really believe we can work to decrease gun violence, so. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So our next presentation is on the 26-megawatt solar farm that is currently under construction on the north end of town, and since this is, you know, quite a disruptive project for folks who live in the area, and I think of high interest to many of our residents, I've asked our town planning director, Mike Liddon, and engineer Jeff Shea to give a presentation on what's happening and what to expect. Good evening.
So we'll give you a brief rundown of the current activities and where we left off. So just to start off, when this, this application was first approved, it was a declaratory ruling with the Siding Council, which the town and neighbors appealed that decision, that there was a resolution, as this board knows. Part of it, there was an agreement that was ironed out with the parties, that kind of outlined some of the requirements for the development, the site development plans. An application for development management plans, which is commonly referred to like a site plan development, was submitted to the Siding Council. So that's the, it's the more detailed submission, where now we're talking about construction detail, stormwater management, erosion sediment control. So a lot of the details are missing in the declaratory ruling. That's really was the concept was approved in the declaratory ruling. On March 28th, 2019, the Connecticut Siding Council approved the development management plans, which were subject to four conditions of approval, and we'll kind of go over some of the highlights. So one of the things we want to point out that has changed from the submission is this purple area here, about 4.3 acres, actually was added to the site. That was actually, it's on another parcel that was owned by Griffin Land. Some panels were moved onto this. So the Siding Council permitted the, if you want to call the expansion of the project, but that was really into an area that's zoned industrial, owned by the same property owner as the other one. The other thing is, the big thing is that Deepwater Wind no longer owns this project. It's now owned by Desri Solar. Desri Solar also purchased all the properties from Griffin Land. So they, they have, we're no longer dealing with Deepwater Wind, although everyone referred to it, along with the petition, as DWW. DWW is no longer associated with anything to have to do with this project. It's Desri Solar. And I'll give, we'll talk about later some of the contacts. Some other things that occurred was the spacing of the panels. So during the declaratory ruling, or declaratory process, there was a preliminary layout for all the panels. Now they really, they dialed in, and the models they were using tightened up, so they kind of were able to say, yeah, here is the real footprint that will, our panels will occupy in these fields. In addition to, there were some supplemental documents that were developed, such as the barn preservation and agricultural soil management plan, which we'll get into in a little bit. This is another thing that's changed. During the declaratory ruling, the Siding Council asked the Deepwater Wind, or we'll just refer to them as the applicant now, to look into a higher production of what's called a 400-megawatt solar panels. This map was provided by Desri Solar. The panels that are in red here, those are the 400-watt panels. So they were able to use the higher-production panels in a portion of the project, which was as a result of losing or moving panels from parcel five, they figured a way to increase the output of that area without requiring to expand closer to any of the residential properties. Because that was the other thing, caveat, that the Siding Council gave to the applicant was, listen, if you're going to relocate the panels off of parcel five, you can't put them in places we're going to encroach further onto some of the abutting residential properties. The clearing limits associated with this, because now we had real panel models that showed, you know, the actual size, and the spacing was determined versus that preliminary plan, resulted in some areas that were actually saw reduction of clearing, like, for example, this northern area here, there's about six acres that were removed from clearing down by the irrigation pond, there's about 2/10 of an acre, along with another 2/10 of acre, kind of by the sewer easement between the north, we'll call it the northern and southern parcel. So, I mean, the applicant found a way to tighten up the project and kind of limit some of the, you know, nuisance impacts that would have around the perimeter of the project. Another thing in the, during the development management plays, I kind of hit on it earlier, but some of the supplemental documents were developed. One thing, for example, the area in yellow that's on this map here, that's a pollinator habitat. During the declaratory application process, they were talking about a little square, less than 10,000 square feet. They've expanded that area, so now we have a pollinator habitat, which with, has a management plan, so that they're going to actually maintain, so to promote natural... plan, so that they're going to actually maintain, so to promote natural, you know, pollinator habitat, which it's a bonus to this project. The other thing, as I said earlier, with going along with the panel placement, was the grading, stormwater, et cetera, that has been all finalized. We'll get into that next. So first, traffic management. The way the site's going to work is the construction laydown area will be here, which is off the southern edge of Hoskins Road. This is the project, these are the two barns. They'll be, they're in the process of finalizing the staging area, they're rolling, putting in stone, they've stripped the area, leveled it, they've winrowed the agricultural soils, pursue it to the agricultural soil management plan. So they're preparing for the bulk of workers that will be coming here. When we went through the declaratory process, this was considered an 18-month construction project, it has now been reduced to eight. There'll be 200 workers on site. So all those workers will be parking, along with storing their materials out over in the construction laydown area here, which is the south.
Well, go. You're doing a great job.
There you go, Jeff. My moral support tonight. So erosion sediment control, it was, they, as I said earlier, they honed in on this, they've developed more, there's some permanent stormwater features, there's 12 temporary sediment traps that will be going in, they're really making a conscious effort to minimize impacts from an erosion sediment control or stormwater management perspective. They received their DEP stormwater permit, which requires third-party inspections for erosion sediment controls. It also requires that the design engineer has to be on-site for the first three months of the project. So VHB will be out there, making sure that as they start, start construction activities, moving earth, that they're following the grading plan, they're following the erosion sediment control plan. So this is not a Wild, Wild West setting where they can just pop in a bulldozer and move dirt, and no one will, don't have to worry about if there's any adverse effects to the area or drainage. So stormwater management plan, I just want to point out a few things. One is that there's permanent basins, this is a permanent basin, that will be within the solar field. So they looked at just not only that construction standpoint, but long-term, how do we handle stormwater for this site? There's two of them that are rather large. One is about an acre in size in the northern fields, which is kind of off this map, the fields that are north of County Litchfield area. This is down near the triangle of County and Hoskins. Those two basins are permanent, they stay for the life of the project. There are other areas, the temporary sediment traps, that as the project is stabilized, it will be removed. One of the things that Siding Council required in their approval for this was that they had to develop a plan on how are they going to maintain these features? Because they look great on paper, but if they're not going to maintain them for the life of the project, it's not worth it. They have provided those details to the Siding Council. So, and DEP signed off on this, this plan, along with their erosion sediment control plan, so they have their two construction permits beyond the permit with the Siding Council that were required. Then there's the subject of water testing. So part of the agreement was that there will be testing prior to construction and post-construction, for the private, for the homes that are served by private wells. 55 homes were identified on a well receptor plan developed by GZA. Of the 55 homes, 36 responded, and Desri provided the town a copy of the results. The results were non-detect, there was no contamination in any of the wells that were determined, that were observed. Although you have some historical ones, for example, over on Noelwood, Centerwood area that were contaminated, that were part of the filter system, that the DEP would offer filters for homeowners, et cetera, which they still have. So so far, they're following the permit in that sense, and they have provided us copies of the reports, and we didn't see anything, you want to?
Yeah, I just explained a little bit, the purpose of the testing ahead of the project is to have a baseline. So at the end of the project, we'll see if there's any changes, any impacts, because we really didn't have any idea, and nobody could really tell us with certainty whether there would be any mobilization of contaminants from agricultural uses. So, you know, we will have a sort of a cause and effect at the end of the project, in fact, there is an issue with further well contamination.
And if there was well contamination, obviously the results would be shared with DEP and DPH, so therefore, there would be a state agency involved for an enforcement standpoint, so people would be protected. But this, at least, as Jeff said, we're documenting it, and we're following the order. One of the other things, the subject of agricultural soil, prime farmland soils, was discussed throughout the process. The areas in yellow that are on this map, those are the areas of the prime land soil within the project. A plan has been developed, that basically they're trying to limit disturbance of these areas. So protective measures will be implemented, such as if it rains more than an inch, the contractors will not work. They will try to limit their access within the fields to existing farm roads, if possible. A vegetated cover is to be maintained, so they've seeded the site already, and they're trying to make sure that they will not compact these areas. In areas where that they're, they'll trench, they're going to basically strip the top soil, leave it in a winrow or a pile, and they will try to restore that in the same horizontal or vertical location as they, as it was located within the area of disturbance. So they, this plan is really robust. One of the comments that the Siding Council, because I was at one of the meetings that this was approved for the development management plan, they complimented the applicant, this has been, this is the most complete application they've seen for a solar project in Connecticut. Like, there is a lot of safeguards that are out there that address some of the concerns that came up during the declaratory process. Construction schedule. So, I said already, they started May 1st, they're out there, well, I have some pictures later, we'll show what's going on. They're looking for October 15th as completion date. Tree clearing has been completed, they were, they were under the gun to do their clearing according to their DEP permit, they had to complete it by May 15th, because the bats come out on May 15th. So there was an endangered species that was noted within the area. So that, that work has been, is following their state permit. October 15th is the, this target date for completion. Anything on October 1 that's sticking out of the ground would be subject to the property tax, so just keep that in mind, too, as things progress. Contractor layout, you can see right now, they have some of their, they have a, they have a, some Connex boxes out there. The picture on the left, that is the, looking north off of Hoskins Road, the two barns and the two gray blobs that are on the map. Their construction trailer is out there as we speak. They have, they're starting to bring their material, like, right now, if I had to guess, you have, you're not at 100, you're not at 100 workers out there, you're probably at about 25, 30 workers out there. It will start ramping up, there will be storage over on the Hoskins Road laydown area, too. So here's some current photos. This was, this actually photo was from last week. This is looking at the, from Hoskins Road, looking south of the construction laydown area. What they were doing in this area was stripping the top soil. It's, in the picture on the right, it's, the prime farmland soil is stockpiled in a row outside of the construction area. They were doing it to level the area, which was consistent with their permits. Then, this was this morning, about 11 o'clock, they were, they're putting in stone, so they're preparing to have this area ready for material, parking for contractors, et cetera, which still, it's consistent with the plans. This was a picture from last week, and I apologize for the, if it's a little grainy. Picture on the right is looking back, that was the edge of the clearing of the northern fields. Picture on the left is showing the kind of setup with the construction trailers, et cetera, within the fields. As of this morning, materials are out there, so those are some of the materials that are out in the field. They were starting with their rigs, installing, and when we were out at 4 o'clock this afternoon, we'd say that some of the, some of the peers are actually in. You can, I apologize for the photo, but just to the right of the drill rig, there's a few posts that are sticking out that they already had in the ground. So they're progressing quickly out there. And you could see, the ground has, the site has somewhat of a cover of crop. This is looking now, just showing more of the, the material is being stored, looking over towards the southwest, the contractor yard and the barns. So, the, as I said earlier, there's a new contractor. The contractor's developed a website, it's tobaccovalley.solar, tobaccovalley.solar, and the primary contact for the project now is Aaron Svedlow, and that's his email address. We have met with him, they've had a pre-construction meeting with the town, they have building permits in hand, they paid their building fees, $618,000 was the building permit fee that we received from this project. They have so far been very cooperative to deal with. They, Aaron Svedlow has been the primary contact, and that's, he has asked, if anyone has concerns, contact him. Or if you want to keep up with the project, they will, and right now, this is all they have, is their update, they're still kind of generating their website, they will start maintaining that website and updating it more regularly. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you. More questions?
I have a quick question. What's the rehabilitation plan for that parcel five, once they get finished?
So they're going to take the stone fabric out, they're going to take the top soil that they stockpiled, they're going to move it back to where it was, just where it came from, and then they're going to seed it and stabilize it.
Okay, so they are going to take the stone out?
They're going to restore it, yeah, no, that stone will not stay. That's actually part of the permit with the Siding Council.
Mike, I know there are some people here from Berkshire Way and some, some concerns around screening. Are we in a position to be able to share any plans for that area?
There are no plans for that area. So, and really, because this was a, this was an application that was approved by the state agency, the Siding Council, we really have a limited authority on this. What I would say to those individuals is reach out to, oops, Aaron Svedlow. He, he would be the primary. I know that we met with him on Friday, myself and Maria, and on an unrelated matter, and mentioned that he was talking to neighbors on Berkshire Way about potential screening, supplemental berm and/or plantings over there. So any, you know, he's offered to homeowners, you have a concern with visual impact that this has, reach out to me, I'll be happy, or one of my staff will come meet with you, see if we can work out a deal. Because I know that, he mentioned Mr. Sutton at our meeting and said, yeah, I met with Mr. Sutton, and I was going to develop a planting plan for him, so.
Can I ask one more question? For those people who did not have their wells tested, who were on that list of 55, do they have a chance to have their wells tested later on, or was they had to have a baseline in order to be tested later?
I think all I can say to that is, we didn't have control of that process, that was kind of outside our purview. The program was kind of designed by the consultant working for the developer, and they reached out, and we don't really even have the documentation.
I was just wondering, if one of those people wants to find out about getting their well tested somewhere in the process, is that, should they go to them, or?
Aaron Svedlow. I would say contact Aaron Svedlow, because, I mean, they've offered, they said they were going to test, you know, they up to the 55.
No, I understand, for whatever reason, they didn't respond, but I'm just wondering if later in the process, they want to participate in testing.
Any other questions? Okay, I want to, you know, make sure that we're keeping the lines of communication open between the neighbors and the town. So, you know, we obviously shared the email address, anyone is welcome to reach out to me, or any member of the Board of Selectmen, or our planning department, because I'm sure there are going to be additional questions that come up along the way, and I just want to keep that line of communication open, so, thank you all. Okay, thanks.
Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to my First Selectmen's report, and then the Town Manager's report. Send a, I want to send a big thank you to the American Legion Post 84, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 1926, for their partnership with the town in organizing Monday's Memorial Day parades and ceremonies. I hope that you enjoyed time with family, but I also hope that you took the opportunity to pause, to remember the real meaning of the holiday, and the incredible debt of gratitude that we owe those who answered the call of service. The Hometown Hero Committee met at the beginning of May to review nominations, and we made award recipient selections. Because of the conflict with Burgers on the Bridge, which was scheduled for tonight, May 29th, the annual Hometown Hero Ceremony will be on Monday, June 10th, at 5:00 p.m., right here in the main meeting room. Speaking of which, Burgers on the Bridge has been rescheduled to tomorrow, from 4:30 to 7:00, at the Old Drake Hill Flower Bridge. It's a fundraiser that supports activities of the nonprofit that cares for the bridge and the more than 60 flower boxes. Planning Director Mike Liddon recently shared an update with the Economic Development Commission summarizing key projects around town that are either planned or underway. It has the latest update on projects that we hear a lot of questions about, so everything from the Hartford, to activity at Powder Forest, the Big Y parcel. You can find the full PowerPoint on the town website, on the Economic Development Commission's webpage, or if you subscribe to my First Selectmen's report, that's emailed, there'll be a link emailed out tomorrow. Friday, May 31st, is the annual Greenways Awards and Celebration, held in conjunction with National Trails Day. The event will take place at Stratton Brook State Park, starting at 10:00 a.m., and this year's awards recipients include State Representative John Hampton and the Simsberry Land Trust. The Simsberry Board of Education is working on a facilities master plan for the school district. On Wednesday, June 5th, the public is invited to attend a forum to learn more about student populations and the conditions of the schools, as well as offer input. It takes place at the library, starting at 7:00 p.m. The Simsberry Special Ed PTO will host a panel of first responders and parents to collaborate on working together to build a strong community response for Simsberry citizens with special needs. The event will be Wednesday, June 5th, in the Simsberry High School Amphitheater, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. A reminder that June 7th is going to be Bike to School Day for students at Squadron. Bike to School Days for Tooten and Latimer occurred earlier this spring. And I think I will leave it there and turn it over to the Town Manager.
Great, thank you. Good evening. A few items, under Board of Selectmen Business. In regards to the naming of One Old Bridge Park, that is Agenda Item F this evening, if you decide to move forward with creating that work group, the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission had identified a member to participate. They did identify Rachel Wellman to serve on that work group, should you decide to create that, and just wanted to note that for you, for when you get to that item this evening. We did have a late addition to tonight's agenda. We received a public gathering permit application for the Farmington Valley Jewish Congregational Sabbath Worship. We were able to add that to the agenda yesterday morning, so in compliance with FOIA, you do not need to add that to the agenda this evening, but again, just wanted to alert, alert you to the fact that we do have that addition for tonight. Lastly, under Board of Selectmen Business, the proposed easement for 87 Riverside Road. We had two very minor, non-substantive changes. We did put a new copy for you at your desk this evening. The title of the map slightly changed, so we've updated the document to reflect that, and we made a change to execution anticipated for June of 2019. But again, just wanted you to have the full and complete copy before you vote on that this evening. From the Town Clerk's office, a reminder that dog license renewals for 2019-2020 begin June 1st. Folks can renew their dog licenses at our Town Clerk's office, or by mail. Additionally, our Town Clerk and animal control officer are hosting a rabies clinic this weekend, and information about that is included in the report. Lastly, very good news from Engineering. The recent grant application that we submitted to CROG under the Transportation The recent grant application that we submitted to CROG, under the Transportation Alternative Set-aside Program, that is for the bike path from Terrifill to Curtis Park, that was shortlisted. So we have an interview on June 3rd, and ultimately, we are hoping that that is one of the three projects that will be recommended for funding.
Awesome.
It's great news.
Great, thank you. Moving on to Selectmen Actions. Item A is a request to designate June Handicap Parking Awareness Month. It's an education campaign led by the Aging and Disability Commission, to bring awareness to the proper use of handicap parking spaces. I'll ask Ed Lamontaine, who's Chair of Aging and Disability, to share a few, oh, I've seen the posters back. Hey, come on up.
Go ahead, Ed. I'm just a visual aid.
All right. I'll put my other hat on. So, as you know, the mission of the Aging and Disability Commission is in part to inform and educate citizens on various topics relative to persons with disabilities and seniors. So this is one thing that we have initiated, actually, this is the seventh year that we are requesting this designation. It's to inform the citizens that parking in handicap, illegal parking in handicap parking spaces is not allowed. We work closely with the Simsbury Police Department on the education. We educate, they enforce. And Mike Jennings, who is a Commissioner, is a wheelchair user, and he, more than any of us, knows the difficulties that he has in trying to park in any of our businesses, and having a difficulty in parking in businesses if somebody is illegally parking in a handicap parking space. More importantly for him is that, because he has a wheelchair van, what we've indicated on the poster is that there are crosshatches, and people will actually park in the crosshatches, and he has been, on several occasions, unable to get back into his van because there's cars in those areas. So Mike has done, along with the Community Relations Officer with the Simsbury Police Department, has done a video that we have at SCTV, and that they are gracious enough to run that during the month of June. So, again, we are just requesting that this designation be made for June, and then we will work from our end of it, and also with the Police Department, to inform and educate citizens of Simsbury.
Super, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, is there a motion, effective May 29th, 2019, to designate June of 2019 as Handicap Parking Awareness Month in the town of Simsbury?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
And we had a public hearing earlier this evening on two Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Proposals, one from the Grange, one from the Simsbury Housing Authority. Is there a motion effective May 29th, 2019, to approve the Neighborhood Assistance Act Program applications as presented, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to submit the applications to the Department of Revenue Services, and to designate Deputy Town Manager Melissa Appleby as the municipal liaison?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item C, we have a couple of public gathering permits. First is for the Simsbury High School graduation. Is there a motion effective May 29th, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for the Simsbury High School graduation ceremony for the class of 2019, at Simsbury Meadows, on Friday, June 14th, as presented, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved. Congratulations to all.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion passes. Item D, is there a motion effective May 29th, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for the Farmington Valley Jewish Congregation Sabbath Worship at Schultz Park, on Friday, June 28th, 2019, as presented, and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. For those of you not aware, Schultz Park is the beautiful gem of a park that's right next to Town Hall, and I'm so glad to see that it's getting, it's getting some use, because it really is a beautiful thing in the center of our town.
It's the one you can't park at.
True.
Minor detail, Sean.
Ride your bike.
Walk, Sean. My bike got run over by a car.
On that, we'll move on to Item E, which is the proposed easement at 87 Riverside Road. At our last meeting, we, you know, discussed the easement. The town currently maintains a small piece of property along Riverside Road, next to the Flower Bridge. There has been no formal agreement in place, and this easement helps to formalize that practice. I'll ask Maria just to share a little bit about what the easement contains, and also explain the fence that's going to be put up in that area.
Sure, thank you. So, one of the positive aspects of this easement is that, if in fact, this property does ever change ownership, this easement will remain with the property. So folks who visit the Flower Bridge have become accustomed to being able to benefit from the lovely sitting area, and some of the plantings, and the flower beds that have been created there. So we're very grateful to the property owner for being willing to do this. We would be obtaining recreational easement for a dollar, and we would essentially just be continuing current practice. We would be continuing to mow and maintain that small area. The homeowner did request if we could assist with putting up, essentially replacing a very small section of fencing and some signage for safety and security purposes. We do concur with that, and feel that would be a very responsible thing to do. For fencing, our options are somewhat limited, because it is in a floodplain, but we can put some sort of a fence there. So we will be doing that, we anticipate the cost will be very nominal, and that that would be coming out of our parks maintenance funds.
Any questions? Right, well, just wanted to, you know, send my appreciation to the homeowner for working with the town in its capacity, because it's a really beautiful addition to the park there. Is there a motion effective May 29th, 2019, to approve the recreational area easement for the parcel at 87 Riverside Road, as presented, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the easement documents?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Finally, Item F is the naming of One Old Bridge Park. So in, really, the next couple of weeks, the town will be kicking off construction of the new park by the Flower Bridge. At the moment, the park doesn't have a name, so the plan is to have an inclusive process where we'll ask residents to share their suggestions, and ultimately, there will be a recommendation passed to the Board of Selectmen. And the thought was to create a committee with representation from the Board of Selectmen, the Old Drake Hill Flower Bridge Executive Committee, and Culture Parks and Rec. And I'm just going to recuse myself from this particular vote, because my wife is on the list.
Smart vote. Who's in charge?
I've asked Chris to make the motion.
Thank you. Where am I reading? Before you make the motion, maybe you need to...
First you have to decide who it's going to be.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, young man.
The last time we gave away our ability to name something, it didn't go so well. And this board rejected the name that was recommended, because it was an individual, and there wasn't a uniform response or consensus around using that. So I would strongly caution this group to be very careful with making the same mistakes that the prior day, of picking one individual from a naming standpoint, because I think we could all come up with 200 different people to name stuff after, and you're not going to get consensus from this group on that, so.
And if I could also point out that we created a naming policy for the town after that, which this group would be subject to.
Sure, yes. We'll follow those guidelines and policies.
Those were really long frustrating meetings, so let's not do that again. Other than that, I'm fine with this.
What am I reading?
Somebody has to reserve on the...
So, Chris, you're going to...
It says insert name.
So that's...
Further move to appoint the following people to the One Old Bridge Road Park Naming Rights Committee?
You got to do the move effective part first.
The first motion right above it?
Yeah, well, that's right. No, Mike. I don't know what he did.
Let's go on to the next topic while Mike finds...
Okay, so move, it's right here. Sorry, so move effective May 29th, is that where we are?
Yes, yes.
Correct, okay. Move effective May 29th, 2019, to establish the One Old Bridge Park Naming Rights Committee. The committee is tasked with reviewing suggested names to the park, with recommending a name for the new park to the Board of Selectmen. And we'll be certain to follow the naming rights, compliance rules, and regulations that you guys all brought up, before I assure you. Further move, so, further move to appoint the following people to the One Old Bridge Park Naming Rights Committee. Me, Chris Peterson, Board of Selectmen, Liaison of Culture Parks and Recreation, Shereen Wassel, representing the Old Drake Hill Flower Bridge Executive Committee, and Rachel Wellman, representing the Culture Parks and Recreation Committee. Do I have...
I'll move that.
Sorry?
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Well done.
Pass.
You really want to get it, don't you?
Well done.
You really do.
For the record, I asked Chris to do the motion, because he's the liaison to Culture Parks and Rec, but then I forgot that his name was one of the people on there.
I appoint me.
I'm sure it's all in comparison, we don't need to...
Cheryl, next time, I'll be sure to ask you.
Thank you, on behalf of everyone.
Item, Item G is a budget status report, which is a practice that we're implementing quarterly, which I think is a really, really good practice, and this is the first of...
Okay, so I'm just going to give you the highlights on the report from the last time I reported out. Also, I just wanted to make you aware that there's a lot more in this budget status report than you're used to seeing in the prior budget status reports. So typically, what was reported on in the past was the general fund, any of the capital projects. And now, basically, everything that I see in our accounting system, you all see now. So every single fund, whether it be a special revenue fund, enterprise fund, general fund, you guys are seeing everything for transparency. So with that said, I'll just give you the highlights, and then if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. So related to the education cost sharing grant, the state of Connecticut has finalized its entitlements, and so at the end of the fiscal year, we will be exceeding budgetary estimates for this grant by about $626,000. So some good news there. Mike already mentioned this earlier, but our building permit revenue is actually not reflected in these reports, but since it's a substantial amount of revenue, we wanted to bring it to your attention now, that we did receive about $613,000 in building permit fees for the Deep Water Wind Solar Project. And this is, again, in excess of budgetary estimates. With regards to the general fund expenditures included in the status report, there are a couple line items that are expected to exceed budgetary estimates. However, the general fund as a whole, there's no concerns for year-end, we're probably going to land pretty much within budget.
Can we go back to the revenues for a second?
Yeah, sure.
So the one that caught my eye is the fee reembance, this revenue has been reallocated. Did we do that?
Yes, we did.
We did?
So it's going to show as a revenue, and then it's going to show as a transfer out.
And the Board of Finance affirmed that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Moving on to the Simsbury Farms Fund, as of March 31st, the expenditures exceeded revenues by about $424,000. This is in line with the same amount of loss as the same period in the last fiscal year, so March 2018. Pretty much within expectations for this time of year, the only time we're going to see a change related to the decrease of this loss is with our spring activity, with the opening of the golf course, and the spring activities that are coming up. So towards the end of May and June, we'll see if, we should see this loss reduce.
So just to be clear, the solution that the Board of Finance rejected, we still have the same damn problem, because we didn't fix this. Even though we upped the allocation and everything else that everybody wanted, we still haven't solved the damn problem.
No, but, that is for current year, fiscal year '20, assuming Tom's budgetary estimates come through, we should be solvent with that fund.
Should be, but the Board of Finance still has to find 394 to transfer.
Yes. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the health insurance fund, since that's a fund that we're watching closely. Revenue has exceeded expenditures by about $636,000. So we're in a good position, but of course, a million of that was a transfer in from the general fund. Currently, reserves are at about $2.3 million, and I just looked at it for April activity, we're down to about $1.8 million. So we'll see what happens with the year-end for that, as the claims come in. I think that was it on the major items. If anybody has any questions on any other items, or wants me to speak to any of the other funds that are in the report?
Just quickly, maybe, Tom, I may have missed it the other night at the meeting, I arrived late. The, so the, we're up a bit in general revenue, so for recreation, anything particularly driving that?
Yeah, we're up. The pool of rink had a good year. The rink had its second highest, actually not, I think it was one of its highest year in revenue ever. I kind of spent a few months now since I said it, but, so the rink had a really good year, we didn't have any bad weather with cancellations, or closing the rink like we did in November before. But the, so far, camp registrations, our swim pass revenue was up at this point as well, so that's going to drive it. We're doing okay with camps, it's, you know, it could be better. One day camp is doing really well, the largest, but the smaller camps aren't generating the revenue where we'd like it to be. But we're still coming off that six month, five months of July through November last year, where the golf course weather was...
Yeah, I understand all that.
This was horrible there, so we're digging out of that hole.
Yeah.
But get to that, when Sean mentioned the 394, that's roughly the number, we were talking about salaries and benefits, and going with what we were talking back during the budget cycle about.
So are there, are there ways to, that positive that you see in recreations, in recreation activity, are there ways to continue to expand upon that, take advantage, and...
We're doing what we can within our budget means, I mean, we're somewhat restricted, because we don't have a surplus to fall back on and draw from for, you know, additional advertising, that kind of thing. So we're trying to work with what we have, or I'm trying to work with what we have, and the staff is doing everything they can, trying to put them promotions and that kind of thing. Outside of the poor weather we've had this spring, the golf course is doing well, we're up in passes, actually, so is an additional golf passes, we're up, the Farmington Valley pass system, we tried, so we did get some additional pass holders out of that, that we didn't have before.
Yeah, I was surprised to see how, how positive the spring golf revenue was relative to the spring that we've had, relative to last year's spring, which I don't...
We definitely had a last year.
I had a last, which I don't consider our this year's spring to be better than last year's spring, so it's a good stuff.
Yeah, so April may have been very kind to us, but we're starting to get into that streak, we had four days in a row of sun this past weekend, we did it really well. So we just need to tag some more of those, you know, together.
Well, that and Tower Ridge closed, right?
What's that?
Tower Ridge closed too, so that doesn't hurt.
Well, no, just when I just, again, when I see something like that, a positive indicator or metric like that, you're always trying to figure out, get underneath it and chase it, and, you know, pump it up as much as you can.
We're trying.
Question, question on pension. So the revenue, this doesn't include investment gains?
It does. It's everything.
How did we only make $235,000 on $24 million? Because we need to fire our advisor if that's actually true.
What's the comparative period?
Should have been the first quarter.
No, that'd be nine months, wouldn't it be?
The 266 is just for OPEB.
No, so like, the general government is only up 235,000 on a $24 million fund?
Yeah, so the interest, well, actually, the change in market value actually went down $8,000, and we had interest and dividends of $479,000. So the change in fund balance is more related to the retiree payments of $1.3 million, but we only had contributions into the fund of $1.2 million.
So we didn't have an investment gain, despite the fact that the markets are back up? Or is the, are the actuaries smoothing everything in?
Well, this is as of March, so I think there were some gains post-March, but I actually, I don't know what they are offhand, I can look. But yes, this is everything.
Yeah, because that doesn't seem right.
Well, the last quarter of last year, and the beginning of the first quarter this year, we're all down, so.
The first quarter this year wasn't, though, it ended up being up.
Started out on your rack.
It also depends on where the money is, too.
I know, but the problem is, the actuaries whack us on when the market goes down, but then they smooth in when the market goes up, and we don't get the full benefit of it, so.
Yeah, I'll take a look, I'll ask, I'll reach out to Chris Cashmore of FIA, but these tie out to the statements, so the numbers are accurate, but I'll find...
No, I'm sure they're accurate, it's just, you know...
I'll find out the detail behind the...
Because they always whack us on the arc.
Do you know if there is anything coming in from the state, from their budget, that's going to swing any of these numbers, one way or the other? Anything that looks likely at this point?
I don't think there's anything new post-budget season.
No.
I know the teachers' retirement is still in discussions, we thought that was dead, and it's not. And I'm not sure about the minimum wage, I think that...
Minimum wage passed.
It passed.
It was signed, too, so.
Yeah, and in terms of our intergovernmental revenues from the state, the revised numbers we saw, very nominal, about $7,000 to our good, from our projected that we budgeted, so.
So the minimum wage is going to impact you?
It's going to, it's going to be a nightmare to navigate that. I'm not really clear on all of the new rules, but what I've read the last few days is it's going to be a carve-out for 16 and 17-year-olds for, I think it's 90 days.
And there's a 90-day window there.
Yeah, you know, a lot of our staff is older than that, so where, if you bring in a brand-new lifeguard, for instance, at 18 years old, they're automatically going to get $5 at the end of this whole process, $5 more than the 10-10, the 17-year-old lifeguard who's basically walking in the door at the same time. It doesn't make any sense, and then how are we tracking the 90 days? Is it 90 working days, is it 90 days over three months? You know, how, how does that work?
It rarely makes sense.
Yeah, it's, maybe it's more clarity, I think, on that, and I sent a note to our, to the State Record Association lobbyist, to get some clarity on how the whole thing worked out, because I have some --
But that'll be your numbers for, into the next fiscal year.
Yeah, there's two raises next, yeah.
Yeah, the next fiscal year, so.
Yes, January and August next year, so our pay scales are, we need to figure out what we're going to do going forward, whether we stop having steps, you know, or, and this is what the job is, and this is, you know, take what we get for applicants and train them up the best we can, because we might not be able to afford those kids who are significantly making more than that, so. There's a lot of thoughts that can have to go into it.
Is that law effective immediately, or is it effective 7-1?
January 1st, I believe, is the first --
So it's retroactively?
Yeah. I believe three phases, if I recall. I think it's four.
Yeah, even with our rink season, I mean, our rink season's five months, so what happens to those kids, those 16 and 17-year-old skate guards who start in November and finish in March? You know, that's, it's, there's, there's a lot of problems with it, so we'll figure it out and do the best we can, but it's going to be challenging the next four or five years.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Outstanding. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
Great, thank you. So the Item H is a fund balance appropriation. On May 14th, the Board of Finance voted to use $420,000 in fund balance to provide mill rate relief for our residents. The budget-approved referendum did not anticipate the use of fund balance to provide mill rate relief, but instead changed the assumptions around our tax collection rate. Therefore, the use of fund balance is considered a supplemental appropriation and requires Board of Selectmen approval.
Do we have to do this now?
We could wait, we could wait. There was, I think, some interest we sensed from the Board of Finance, that they wanted to see us move forward with seeking your, seeking your approval, but in theory, we could, we could wait.
In theory, what happens if we say no?
Nothing. The money doesn't move.
Right.
But the money doesn't need to move.
There's no impact.
Yeah.
All we would do, we would change the amount of money that goes to reserves, because we overcollect.
That's correct.
This was the whole debate, of whether we should move the collection rate or not. This is an actual --
So right now, we're assuming that about $400,000 is going to go into reserves at the 99% collection rate. This just assumes that $800,000 is going to go into reserves, and $420,000 is going to come out for the use of mill rate relief, so there's no impact.
Okay. Do --
Listen on this for me. I move to table.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, fine with that.
Not opposed to it.
Yep.
Well, I think, yeah, I have some things I want to hear from the Board of Finance, I think, before we --
Oh, I don't, I just want to wait.
Okay.
I'm shocked.
And those are all our actions tonight, moving on to appointments and resignations. Is there a move effective May 29th, 2019, to accept the resignation of Steve Spala as a regular member of Culture Parks and Rec Commission, retroactive to March 25th, 2019?
So moved.
Without thanks.
Without thanks, yes.
Who seconded that? Sean? All in favor?
Aye.
And the approval of minutes, any feedback on the special meeting minutes from May 10th, or the regular meeting from May 13th?
Outstanding, as always.
Okay, then they'll stand as presented. Does anyone have any liaison or subcommittee reports?
Just a quick one, the 350th Committee, which you all created, is now up and running, and I would encourage any residents who would like to volunteer or find out more about it, to now look for postings on when the meetings will be, they are open to the public. We will also be opening lines of communication, so that if residents are interested in a particular volunteer opportunity, you can send an email. For now, until that is officially open, if you'd like to just send them to me, or I'm sure any other selectman would be happy to take your interest in that, you should do so.
Great. Thank you.
Friends of Simsbury Farms Annual Golf Tournament, Friday, June 21st. I encourage anybody who's interested to support that organization, that event, you don't necessarily have to golf. The organization will take donations for prizes, both for raffle and for results. Anybody who wants more information can go to Tom's website, right, Tom? Your personal website?
Friends of Simsbury Farms.
But it's a fantastic organization that does a lot to enhance through those donations, and supplement the efforts of the Town's General Fund, the Park and Rec Fund, specifically to the grounds of the entire complex, not the golf course itself, actually, for everything else but the golf course. And some of the stuff they've done in the past is really wonderful, so I encourage anybody who can participate.
That's good stuff.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session with Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, Attorney Bob DiCriscenzo, and Colleen O'Connor, to discuss items stemming from our town's tax sale policy?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
[inaudible]